You mean the seven sixty?
Well, we already took seven sixty down to six eighty. Based on once a week. Where would we be? We've never looked at utilities like this as a moneymaker.
Well, it's not.
It's a convenience for them, so.
That's a requirement.
So if you went instead of ten dollars, if you went eighty-five, you would drop your revenue by about thirty thousand dollars.
So it'd be six fifty? I think we should do that for the first year.
So what are the new numbers to put down? Call in twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three.
Change the ten to five and the six eighty to six fifty.
So that brings our bond line down to what, six fifty-four, six hundred? Correct?
No.
Six fifty from seven sixty, that's a hundred and ten thousand.
So it'd be six.
Six fifty-four, six hundred.
Yeah.
And the fifty-three number would change, right? This number would change.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at. That would drop thirty thousand dollars, so you'd get twenty-three. And then you'd have to do five dollars again in twenty-four.
At least it splits it up.
To keep your fund balance above. It's gonna be close though, because in theory, if you carry that forward, thirty thousand dollars, you'd be at five thousand and sixty-two dollars. And then in twenty-six, you'd be at nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. You just kick that thirty thousand out and do the diagonal. So it's doable, because the revised revenue that you have, I've already reduced that for so there's a little bit of play there, again, staying on that conservative side. We need to increase the recycling rate. Need more people recycling.
Yeah. Although I have bigger bins.
Right.
I think I'll actually encourage people to recycle.
And I think education's gonna be a good thing, too.
And I think, I think if, I mean, if you realize, I mean, right now, I mean, people probably throw in a cereal box or milk carton, I mean, you could
Sure.
That's probably rinsed and tossed and recycled.
I've reeducated myself to.
This one would stay because it would be ten.
Yes, I recycle quite a bit.
So that would stay at six eighty. It's gonna be a ten dollar eight percent, but it would be five though. But this number, you're gonna carry around thirty thousand dollars less all the way down. So you have twenty-three, five.
I just have one question on the system development fees, water tapping inspections. It's all zero, so even though we have those big, huge building fees, there's.
That's just based on new construction. So unless, again, it's, you can put a number in there, but you're really just throwing something, hoping it sticks and hoping that someone develops something. Again, those, those fees go into that reserve account, so they really shouldn't be used to offset, offset any of your operating expenditures anyway.
Same thing for sewer tapping fees, system development fees on page six, it's all, it's the same thing?
Yes.
Is that tapping fees, is that per unit?
Yes.
So won't we have tapping fees for the new apartments above the learning? Oh, they have, they're already paid?
That was part of the rep fees.
Oh, okay.
Rep, sewer and water fees were all paid at times according to permanent issue. Sewer fund, questions?
Tapping fees, I think, did she hit on that, same thing?
I'm not expecting.
Right.
Yeah.
Unless we get a development plan in for Phil comes back? And the number shown there in three sixty-four, one-ten and three sixty-four, one-twenty are both based on preliminary numbers in our budget. They have both been provided to Shrewsbury and Railway. They're aware of the breakdown in capital projects as well as normal operating expenditures.
On the recreation fund, why was it so high budgeted, eleven-five forty this year? A thousand dollars.
Yeah, they, that was their budget, and I can tell you, I think about eight thousand of that was from the two festivals that they planned for, the fairy festival and the steam pump or something.
Yes.
Yeah, they, they budgeted for those, but didn't really have any preliminary work done, so.
Did they give us a budget for this, I think last year, we, did we ask them for a budget?
I.
And that's what we based it on?
That's correct.
Did we do that again, or did you just?
I did, and what we kind of worked back through is, Mary Ann Nutt with me Friday, week and a half ago, and we kind of looked at these numbers and talked about where things need to be in for next year, and this is, this is what we.
Okay, got you.
I think the revenues will be over twenty-five hundred?
I guess it's based on.
Probably, that's just other.
Once you have the rect director.
Well, and that's something, if you, if you look, there is the supplemental recreation budget in the appendix based on if we do have, that would be a full twelve months of having that person in, but yeah, that would definitely change things.
So the farmer's market, you have seven fifty, and there's talk of not doing the farmer's market next year. So does it leave that in there for now?
That's, that's what, they would like to do something different with it, to try and encourage more involvement.
It's, it's a good placeholder. It's not that much money.
I was just wondering. And then the recreation fees, is that twenty-one thousand five hundred come from Burgundy?
It did. Yeah, that, and that will come from any new developer, just like the tapping.
So you're expecting zero for twenty-three?
Just like, just like the tapping.
What happens to the, like, the concert money?
That one under programs.
Oh, okay.
On the capital reserve fund, at the bottom of sales, a vehicle and equipment.
Where from?
KJ, yeah, the next one. Twenty-five hundred, John, it's a sale of what?
We have budgeted the replacement of the backhoe, so that would be the backhoe. And we're still, still working on what was budgeted for this year, which was the bucket truck. We're still working on things like that, so it would be a sale of the lift if we would get to that point.
Do we have a backhoe that we're gonna sell is what you're saying?
Yes, sorry.
You don't really think we'll get twenty-five hundred dollars for that? Is that pretty much shot?
It's a nineteen eighty-seven thing. Probably we'll get more, but again, that would be,
Yeah.
that's great, because that, you know, lessens your number and increases your fund balance.
So we sourced out the lawn service. Did we get rid of that equipment this year?
We sold that actually in twenty-one. We did all municipal. I think we sold about sixty thousand dollars worth of equipment on municipal.
So we own highway.
Yeah.
Explain. I don't know what turnback is.
Basically, when the municipality takes back a portion of the state revenue.
So like when we plow Campbell?
Oh, okay.
Plow down into.
Okay, that's.
To the end of Campbell.
Down on Front Street.
Yeah, that's what, okay.
Not allocation, get a portion of that from Shrewsbury and then that.
That's right, because we go all the way out to the square, Market Square. They really pay us for that, huh? Get them to fix that road right there by CVS, please.
The state road portion of that, oh, how long was that contract? Forever now. It had a certain number of years, I just don't remember.
Do you remember that?
You talking about the stove block contract?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's thirty-five years.
We're coming into what, year three? This coming, this coming winter will be?
This year will be three.
Is it auto-renewing?
I do not believe it, no. I don't think, I don't have contracts or.
I'm sure they do the same thing, yeah.
Oh, no, they're not gonna, they're not gonna want it, yeah.
Yeah.
On the community center fund, so the tasteful occasion budget is thirteen-six-two-oh, but four thousand six hundred and eighty? That, has it got a credit of four hundred every month? Is that what that is?
Yeah.
And then, there's that reimbursement word for senior center again, that's really not a reimbursement, but it's zero.
Because the utility.
Yeah, I, I just got rid of that, so we're just gonna have one line item, which is room rental senior center.
Down one more, that's what it's gonna be.
I just thought it's cleaner.
Okay, so that's just being removed.
And those numbers are based on what the leases that were presented to council. Obviously, if there's changes to that senior center, it might, it's gonna be less. And, and we can still make those changes ahead of council authorizing advertisement or budget.
We wanna move on to expenditures or finish up some stuff from the agenda? Well, I'm saying, continue.
How much of, how much, how many of us have gotten through this whole thing prior to this meeting?
I went through, I went through all of the revenue. I didn't, I didn't finish the expenses.
Good afternoon.
Finish this up next meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Wes, do you have anything?
I do not.
You can add any issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, for those of you who don't know me, which is all of you, the only ones who knew me, I was supposed to earlier. I am Devin Swoonover. I'm in the city of South Bend here with Dave. Dave, of course, is sick conveniently about a day and a half after returning from vacation, so.
I got sick on vacation.
Yeah, it's sick.
Let's do it.
Tequila, maybe this?
I sounded pretty bad.
Yeah, I sounded, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would have laughed that for a second, so. But anyway, yeah, I'm Devin. You may see me again in the future. I'm starting to work a little bit more with Dave, so. But tonight, I don't have anything for the report.
May I have your report?
Honestly, didn't really have a lot to write in the report this month. Majority of the month was spent working on presenting and preparing the budget that we had in front of tonight that we worked on. Obviously, we also talked about both things tonight, which would be the roof replacement project and the refuse contract. Took a significant amount of time in March to September, but the budget definitely was the largest work that we've done in March to September. Keep it short.
Yep. Did we want to talk about the chapter thirty, or you just wanted to bring it up at the next meeting?
Did you print them off? You heard of printing?
Yeah, something came up. I haven't pulled up, but.
It's not, I mean, it's not like it's that critical.
I would say table it.
Bring it up and put it on the agenda.
We gotta advertise it again, so.
Well, but we have to advertise it, and then we have to approve it, so. All right, so we'll do that next month, and I have nothing else. And Mr. Ray?
Yeah, hello. Got more papers here than a paper hanger. Somewhere I have a report from the police commission, let me see. You've got all the, I went over with you the discrepancy that I found in the budget for next year. I'll get back with you on that. If that comes out from Buck Prior, I'll just go ahead and email you a new copy of that. Again, we're having some serious problems, but we recuperated some things. The new Freedom Vehicle that was stolen during the break-ins, the car break-ins, they did recover that. Wasn't damaged. They just parked it someplace else, a new Freedom. Fraud, we gotta be careful of that. I, I did, I did tell people, "As time to please be careful of these frauds. Check things out." CVS was hit three times. The third time, they nailed them. Police came in, sirens blazing, guns pulled, and they're off to the huskow.
Forests.
Does anybody know what a huskow is anymore?
I know.
I know, you do.
I know.
Yeah, they. Canines helped out at the Coverland County Prison. They do some sniffing around up there to just check the prison for drugs and paraphernalia and things. And they gave us a major thank you. I think York Suburban. They also helped out at the school. Every now and then, they'll pull the canines in, goes through the schools, so the kids, you know, they don't, they know they can't get away with anything. Here are, I haven't hit over yet. Buses have cameras. They're working as hard as they can with those. They transfer those out from one to another. Again, that's, that's pretty much all I have. You have anything to add, Erica? They've done, they've really done a good job. They've done a good job.
Yeah, Nate, they, if you, I don't know if you saw the comments on Facebook about the place and the, there were negative comments about taking three times to catch the CVS people, and I didn't really, I didn't like that at all, because, I mean, you gotta call the police for the police to get there. So they waited ten minutes the first, first time it happened, and the second time it happened, they watched them pull away and didn't get a license number. The third time, they actually called while they were in the store, and the police got there in time to arrest them, so guess be proactive and call.
I said that last meeting, if you see something fishy going on, don't be, don't be afraid, don't be hesitant to call the police. We have one lady who's out chasing the people around up on South Schaefer. Don't do that.
We had four officers interviewed.
Yes.
Two that they liked.
Okay, engineers report.
Yeah, no, no written report for the month, but Bucart really isn't working on much at this point. And one item that they are kind of working on is that slider tank, and there's no update on that for an application.
Are we gonna start getting warehouse reports?
I was going to ask the council about this.
Yeah, I think we would, yeah, especially if we're gonna try to monitor, you know, expenses, it would be good to know what we're spending money on.
Yeah, and we've, we're using warehouse for general engineering plan review. We're using Arrow for anything stormwater and GIS related. Bucart is still doing a little bit of things here and there on, on water system. And at this point, sewer is mostly RKC and K with the.
Are moving away from Bucart and Corin?
For the most part, yes.
Is there a reason for that?
Cost and expertise in the different fields.
So maybe all our warehouse, is it warehouse, warehouse?
Yes.
Warehouse.
If you were German, it'd be house.
Okay, warehouse.
Yeah, staffs were a little bit more comfortable with their ability to, and their expertise in reviewing development plans, because that's what they do. That's one of their specialties, as well as providing services for roads and street projects. Up to this point, I think that unless you feel different, I think we've been pretty happy. We are using Arrow a little bit, obviously, on the water side as well. Again, Arrow's specialty is stormwater, water, sewer. Warehouse is more on the general services. So really trying to look at more specialized rather than just one umbrella.
Is there some way that we can project or anticipate what some of their fees might be before we get in that deep? I mean, like the pickleball thing, ten thousand dollars to tell us that we can't afford to put in a pickleball.
Well, I, I know that.
I mean, do we have an idea?
I know that's, but remember, that's fully designed. Like, you could send out the bid.
And we, and we needed it for the grants, so, I mean,
Yeah.
we wouldn't have said no.
Well, I'm just using that as an example.
And they're not, they're not out of line. It's just amazing that, I mean, because there was stormwater involved in putting in the pickleball courts. There's regrading, there's, you know, I mean, it's all.
And so then you're Dutch. It sounds like a lot of money.
So what, I mean, what would, how's it if you compare, what would their fee be if you just use a percentage of estimated construction? Probably not that.
Oh, yeah.
Estimated construction would be.
That would give you an idea, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, usually you're no more than, you try to be no more than fifty percent of construction costs, correct? And that's kind of what.
Yeah, probably, you know, probably lower than that, but I mean, obviously, you know, if you get a multimillion dollar project, your percentage is gonna be lower, and if you get a small, relatively small project, your percentage is gonna be higher. You know, there's certainly a lot of things you just have to do.
You, you add all those up over, over the last year, it's a lot of money. And I, I mean, I'm not gonna say it's wasted, it's just.
Well, that design will fold right into.
Surprise.
Good fellow park updates to, I mean, it won't be, it should be a piece of the puzzle, and it'll just fit right there. So it's not gonna be wasted. It's, it's still there. And if we get the grant to cover the work.
Okay. It still makes sense, too.
All right. Does anyone have any questions on engineer water system?
The, the water, why well one, just two, two hours?
We're doing some repliping over there, so we got them running.
Is that the one going towards the high school?
No, it's down here on Front Street beside the clothing.
York Water, no, no response.
Not one of the.
I mean.
Did you get the letter?
Does that mean we did get one?
So I reached out, before we had the letter graph and spent legal fees, I'm sorry. I reached out one more time and left another voicemail and said, you know, I've called multiple times. We had original discussion. I'd at least appreciate a call back on this topic. The voicemail that I received was very direct in saying that if there's no benefit to the York Water system in altering that agreement or sitting down for a discussion, there's no interest on if York Water to do so.
And you called it back and said that there's no interest in us paying the next bill?
Unfortunately, we haven't signed an agreement that says we need to pay, so.
When's it up?
It's up in twenty-eight. We have to give notice by twenty-six. I mean, I, I would suggest we give notice later than twenty-five.
Didn't you interpret this contract a different way?
The way that the renewal period is worded, it said that you must give two years' notice prior to the initial term. It does not speak of giving notice during the renewal term. It auto-renewed in twenty-eighteen.
The end of the same terms, though.
So, yeah, the ten years was the renewal term. Legal counsel advised that, Dave Slusser-Jones advised that that same term would apply to that ten-year renewal, that it would still be two years would be necessary.
Probably be engineers.
I get the location of the four wells, the one, three, four, and eight. You asked for.
Well, one is down between thirty-six and thirty-four, South Front Street. And well four is out here on Playground, way behind us. Well, three is between two-twenty-two, East Main Street, and three oh-six.
East Main?
East Main Street, yes. And well eight is that one Bowser School Hospital, the Bowser.
Just Bowser.
Yeah, it's Bowser.
Way, way out. It's not the first one, right?
Right, there, there was two wells out there, the new brick building, you see, that well we had abandoned. Just produce water, but we still have another one. Now, when you go down a little further, you see like a mound, that's another one down below there.
Is there an update on the Summit Grove water repair or what's going on there?
They're actually starting making all the repairs, because they wanted to wait to get into their less busy season. And I think Kinsley is doing the repair.
I was gonna say, it looked like they had some serious construction.
Yeah, so they're making those repairs, and their, their usage has not been outlined, so whatever mandates that they did are working, and they're in, in replacement. They're actually doing quite a bit of repair.
Good job.
Demolishing the buildings and.
What's going on over here?
Kim, go to the pool for my. We creep down just slightly, so it's a good thing.
Kinsley's doing.
He was sober.
Got all excited.
Okay.
Okay, it is nine-thirty. So, when, when can we get back together? Yes.
October twenty-fourth, six p.m.
Um, I'm not available after this...
Does it have to be Monday?
No, it doesn't have to be on Monday.
Then Tuesday, twenty-fifth?
I'm out that week, so...
The whole week?
Yeah, I would...
You'll have to go the twenty-sixth of October. I'm sorry, not twenty-sixth, I'm sorry, it goes in the next month, so that would be...
You want to do a holiday?
That one's being asked.
Place commissions on the second...
That's the rack.
Yeah. On the other parts. Oh, I got, I have IGA, maybe. I don't know why he was...
He said that we weren't meeting.
Yeah, he did say that. Did he mean it? Yeah, I think he did. 'Cause I said, well, what in the world are we meeting for, he says, beats me, I guess we don't, I thought he was kidding.
I know, I think we knew, I've got something that I might not be able to get back to town for, what about Wednesday the second?
Uh, place commission, I mean...
Oh, that's right, so, so Friday the fourth, or Monday the seventh?
Either one of those are fine.
Not Friday.
And Monday the seventh?
Monday the seventh sounds good.
And then we're gonna meet the following...
Yeah.
That's why I don't like this, these continuations getting drawn out, I guess, that you feel like you have, then you feel like you have a whole, whole new meeting, and you take your time going through that, too, and what could've gotten done in the next, maybe hour is gonna be another two and a half hours. So six p.m. on the seventh?
For everybody? Does that impact anybody setting up for election?
You can't be on election.
No, no, you've got helping to set up, or, yeah, not, not being on the...
What time are we sitting?
Six p.m.
I gotta double check, I got a grand order, I'm gonna play basketball for college, and I'm not sure where it's gonna be. There really should just be committee reports, I don't think we should...
The rest of the budget.
Yeah, we could do the rest of the budget, too. Six?
Yep.
Six o'clock. A motion.
Motion, we adjourn?
Yep.
Continue.
Continuing, continuing. Don't bang it, don't bang it, and that means...
Down there, but I had a prior point.
You almost got it. Forget batteries.
Well, I don't think, I go to a borough meeting, and there's one page, ours is always three pages long, but, as at other boroughs, there's, their agenda is one page, and generally mostly backed, and ours is three pages long, so there's something we can do.
Well, we could eliminate some of the things we're out there, I mean, I mean, I've always, I've always thought that we should be, like, if you have questions on treasures or... Now, if they did their budget during... Doesn't, if they, if they did their budget during their regular meetings instead of holding the special people to that.